When we get to announcements, I have to...
Good evening. Welcome to the April 3rd, 2023, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I should remember that it's April 3rd because it's my wife's birthday. Happy birthday, Rochelle. We're celebrating at a city council meeting, but she's not even here, so... At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up tonight, we have a number of presentations and proclamations. I'm going to start with a proclamation in recognition of No Hit Zone Week. And I will read this, and I think Sherri Carter is here. If you want to say a few words after I read the proclamation, that would be appropriate, or you don't have to if you don't want to. Whereas according to the No Hit Zone National Initiative, no-hit zones are safe places where no adult will hit another adult, no adult will hit a child, no child shall hit an adult, and no child shall hit another child. And whereas the No Hit Zone National Initiative started in pediatric hospital settings across the United States in 2005 and has spread to 46 states. And whereas no-hit zones are an emerging, low-cost, evidence-based strategy for the prevention of violence in our society, including domestic violence and physical child abuse. And whereas no-hit zones focus on prevention and support during early signs of distress by providing support to prevent hitting, no-hit zones help address problems before they can escalate, which promotes safety for everyone. And whereas the inaugural No Hit Zones in No Hit Zone sites in Stillwater are Big Brothers Big Sisters, Payne County Health Department, Stillwater YMCA, Payne County Youth Shelter, Payne County Head Start and Early Head Start, Wings of Hope, Seville Center, Stillwater Medical Center Pediatrics, and Payne County Department of Human Services. And whereas the No Hit Zone National Initiative believes that increased awareness will encourage other community public spaces to become no-hit zones where all our citizens, especially children, feel safe. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of April 3rd through 7th, 2023, as No Hit Zone Week in Stillwater.
I'm Sherri Carter, and I'm the president of the Board for Resilient Payne County. And these are my lovely fellow board members on the back row, Carolyn McAllister, Blaine Bowers, and Ms. Sorrentino. And we're a very small nonprofit that's here to help our community be trauma-informed and trauma-aware and trauma-sensitive. And No Hit Zones is something we've worked really hard on. We appreciate Amy's help with that. And we're just very happy that this is happening. And we hope to see it grow and grow to where there's more and more than our inaugural group. But those folks will be picking up their posters and materials later this week. And we're excited to have this. So if anybody wants more information, holler. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to bring this down to you, and we can take a picture. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas sexual violence is a devastating and intolerable crime affecting men, women, and children of all races, ages, cultures, economic situations, and abilities; and whereas sexual violence is a major social problem in homes, schools, and communities across the country, resulting in countless physical, mental, and other health consequences; and whereas sexual violence seriously affects our youth, and it is reported that one out of every four girls and one out of every six boys experience a sexual assault before the age of 18; and whereas it's also reported that one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted on college campuses; and whereas the month of April has been designated to promote awareness by increasing education and community involvement to prevent acts of sexual violence. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2023, in the City of Stillwater as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Do we have a representative from Wings of Hope? Nope. We'll make sure this gets to them. Well, we appreciate the work that Wings of Hope does in our community to prevent violence and to help the victims of violence and certainly continue to support their work. All right. Next up is a proclamation in recognition of Fair Housing Month. I think we have some representatives from the Stillwater Housing Authority here, but I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas April 1st, 2023, marked the 55th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, religion, national origin, gender, familial status, sexual orientation, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas the City of Stillwater is committed to support the fair housing law by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to help assure every citizen of their right to fair housing. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim April, 2023, as Fair Housing Month in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and urge all citizens to support fair housing throughout the year.
Mayor, Council, thank you. My name is Jeff Matthews, Community Development Director for the City of Stillwater. And we're excited about this proclamation and the city's stance on continued efforts towards fair housing, and excited tonight to also be joined by members of the Stillwater Housing Authority, Roger Ghost and Tony Broyles, correct? I want to make sure I got that right. But thank you, sir, and council, we appreciate that.
Thank you all so much for the work that you do. All right. Next up, we have a presentation by OSU art students regarding a temporary mural... mural, a mural? Temporary mural at Chris Salmon Plaza.
Good evening, Mayor Joyce and Council. In effort to continue honoring our first female mayor, Chris Salmon, and celebrate our vibrant community, the city manager's office worked with OSU art professor Kate Kinder and Prairie Arts Director Megan Brassau for art inclusion at the Chris Salmon Plaza at 823 South Main Street. Throughout the next few weeks, we will see a mural installation at the plaza that represents Chris Salmon's dedication to our community. Professor Kinder led a contest with her students regarding this project, and the two finalists are here with us this evening to share their designs. Professor Kinder, can you please share more information with us?
Hi. My name's Kate Kinder. I am a professor of visual arts at OSU. I teach drawing classes as well as a class called Visual Thinking: Image and Surface. It's a foundations or freshman-level course where they, the students, learn to develop ideas and create art. So our very first finalist, we have two. The first person who is going to present on their work is Brynlee Floyd.
Hello, my name is Brynlee Floyd, and this is my design. I titled it Ripple. Through this design, I wanted to represent Chris Salmon in a way that shows that her empowerment as well as her feminine side. So first of all, starting with the hammer. This hammer represents her background as an architect as well as her strength. And contrasting that on the other side is a rose, which represents her feminine side as well as representing Oklahoma through the state flower. Both of the hammer and the rose work together to create the idea that Chris was capable of doing work that, at the time, was seen as a man's job. The hammer also represents the background of, or the background of architecture, while the rose represents the final product. The lines on either corner represent a grid that comes together, and it shows a blueprint, which is often used in architecture, while the other geometrical shapes such as rectangles and squares also represent architecture by showing structure and buildings. The curving lines and shapes in this design show an ideology that Chris had about design, which was accessibility for wheelchairs. So these curves represent ramps and other wheelchair-accessible pathways that, in an abstract way. The circles on the lower right corner that overlap represent an ideology that Chris had about design, which is that design is like a pebble dropped in water where the concentric circles represent ripples that dissolve among boundaries. In the background, you can see small polka dots, and these are used as a nostalgic reference to early pop art in the 50s and 60s. And the color palette is used to show excitement in a fun way as well as also introducing a feeling of nostalgia. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second finalist is Carly Roddy.
Hello, my name is Carly Roddy. This is my design. I've chosen to entitle my design "Building Sunshine." I chose this title because I wanted my design to represent both Chris Salmon's work as an architect, as well as the impact that both she and her work had on the city of Stillwater. Starting with the blue sections of my design, there is a clear depiction of blueprint in the background to tie back to her time as an architect. And in each blueprint space, I wanted to portray Chris's passions behind her design, which was for accessibility and spaces for people with disability. So on the left side of the composition, there is a depiction of an actual school building that she helped design that would serve as a place of education more suited for people with invisible or less visible disabilities. The other figures in this section are made with simple geometric shapes, and that is so you, as the viewer, can view them as two different objects. One of those objects being other buildings in a blueprinted floor plan, and the other object being a pen or a marker that she would have used to create her designs. On the rightmost blueprinted area, to act as a balance with the depiction for invisible disabilities on the left, I wanted to create a contrasting representation for visible disability. So I created a unity of shapes that act as an abstract rendition of the pieces of a deconstructed wheelchair, using brighter colors as well in this section to further play into a visible disability. Beyond the blueprint sections, I chose both bright and burnt oranges and yellows in order to give a sense of warmth to the design, as well to hint to a common color palette used in patterns found in the 60s and 70s, which was when Chris was the most active in the community of Stillwater. And among these colors, there are different swirls and lines that I wanted to add, not only to tie the design back to Chris Salmon, but to Oklahoma as a whole. By adding these swirls and lines, breaking up the more architectural geometric shapes, it adds a representation for the winds in Oklahoma, which gives the mural a sense of movement. And if you were to see it on the side of a wall during a windy day, you could almost imagine these lines moving with the air of the wind. And finally, in the top-left corner, you see bright sun rays. These are my way of representing the light that Chris brought to the city through her designs, as well as the bright future that Stillwater would see past her time as mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Those are fantastic designs, and we appreciate you coming here tonight to present them. We have to, like, vote and pick one? Is that over?
They were hoping that you guys would let them know who the winner is. So do we want to do that later?
I think, I mean, I would like to take a little time and look at it.
Yeah, process?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have a vote queued up on the machine for that, do we? They're both fantastic. Oh, yeah. Can we put them both up?
How, what's the installation process? So it's a, was it temporary, did you say?
Yeah, this is, I mean...
We have found some new material. It's called parachute fabric. It's not as thin as what you would think parachutes are like.
Oh, yes, the microphone. But it allows us to be able to paint it at the Prairie Arts Center and then put it up on a wall with a coating that allows it to be good for up to five years, which is something that we thought was really great to have it up for a time period, but not forever, because we could offer this opportunity to students again as well. So, yep, we're looking forward to getting them up. And, you know, we have a, we practiced at the Prairie Arts Center, so there's a lovely mural in our pottery area outside, and it's been going really well. So we're hopeful, fingers crossed, so.
Just curiously, can these be rotated?
Um, they wouldn't be able to be rotated. We'd have to take up another, we'd have to take up two more spots on... This is something that we hope to continue to add to as well. So I have to talk to Kate and see if we could have, we'll see. But, yeah. But we appreciate you giving us the time to show off.
I think it's great. I think the history too with Chris Salmon. I mean, knowing the story, her story, and learning about her and her impact on our community is, it's great to see all of that brought in visually to those murals.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll, I mean, we need more public art and murals throughout the community.
I'm working on it.
We will find a way to put these up.
Okay, sounds great.
And I think this is just, and I mentioned this to you all earlier, I think this is such a great example of a partnership between the university and the city, and we always look for those opportunities and love that. So thank you all very much.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to item four on our agenda, which is the Consent Docket. Councillors, action on the Consent Docket.
Motion to approve Consent Docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on consent. Please vote.
Am I off? What's off?
Consent Docket is approved with a vote of four to zero. That will take us down to public hearings. I think the city attorney has some recommendation for us before we get started on item seven.
Yes, item 7A, the public hearing regarding property addressed at 601 West Tenth Avenue. The legal department is requesting additional time to review this matter. Code enforcement officer James Moore has reached out to the property owner regarding that the city would request for additional time tonight. As such, I respectfully request that the city council vote to table this item to the May 1st, 2023 city council meeting.
Councillors, is there a motion? Questions?
Motion to table to May 21st, was that the date?
May 1st, 2023.
1st.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table item 7A to our May 1st meeting. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that item is tabled to May 1st. And then on item B?
Public hearing 7B, the public hearing regarding property addressed at 915 South McDonald Street, Stillwater, Oklahoma. Same recommendation, the legal department still requires additional time to review this matter. Again, code enforcement officer did make contact with the property owner regarding this property as well, and there was no objection. So as such, I recommend that you vote to table this item to May 1st, 2023.
Motion to table to May 1st, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table item 7B to May 1st. Please vote. That item is tabled to May 1st with a vote of four to zero. Takes us to item 7C, which is to receive public input for project suggestions for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Grant, and consider selecting a project.
Good evening, councillors. Shelley Crines, Grants Manager. Get this to work. There. Okay, tonight is the public hearing for the 2023 Grant, Community Development Block Grant Project Selection. And the national objective for CDBG funds, the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, particularly for persons of low and moderate incomes. And the number of low-to-moderate-income beneficiaries must be determined for each proposed project. And CDBG's Small Cities Program is funded by the Oklahoma Department of Commerce and is a U.S. Housing and Urban Development Program. Stillwater's potential FY23 CDBG allocation is $228,333. And that requires a one-to-one match from the city. And that gives us a potential grant amount for a project of $456,666. And for the use of CDBG funds, examples of viable projects would be waste, wastewater system improvements, fire protection, streets, senior citizen centers, gas and electrical system improvements, removal of architectural barriers associated with handicapped areas, and stormwater drainage improvements, which is our current CDBG project. We held public input meetings on February 28th and March 16th to gather citizen input for potential projects. And we also accepted suggestions by phone and email. So the list of the project suggestions were tiny homes for the homeless, family resource center, new sidewalk along Ninth Street, new turf at Myers Park, a community recreation center and new pool, a new fire suppression system for the municipal library, to redo Matthews Avenue from Duck East to Duncan and add sidewalk on the north side, connect and improve sidewalks to the schools, the Washington School Project, inclusive playground at Boomer Lake, rails to trails, walking cycling path, a community garden, to install a solar farm to power the wastewater treatment plant, and to install solar panels on a municipal building, and drainage improvements for Duck Creek and Elmwood addition. So quite a different range of projects suggested. The criteria for project selection, just the things that we look at with the different suggestions we receive, how many low- to moderate-income individuals would benefit from the project? So CDBG projects must benefit at least 51% LMI individuals. Would the project benefit a particular neighborhood or area of the city, or would it benefit the entire city? Is the proposed project a phase of a larger project? If so, they're not funding projects that must be done in phases at this time. Could the suggested project be completed within the two-year grant funding period? And how shovel-ready is the proposed project? After project selection, staff will return to council for funding appropriation and approval of a resolution of leverage to accompany the grant application. The grant match could potentially be funded by the grant match contingency account in the general fund budget. So this CDBG application fits within city strategic priorities. Number one, effective services and accountable government. Number two, motivated management. And number five, unique culture. Any questions?
Councillors, any questions?
I assume that the $466,000 that we would be receiving, that we know that the fire suppression project would fit into that budget?
Yes. Anything else?
There's a lot of much-needed projects on that list. Some of which wouldn't probably fit in the $466,000. Thanks, Shelley. This time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't think I have anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing. So I will close the public hearing. Shelley, do you have a recommendation for us?
I do. I have a recommendation. And the staff recommends selecting, as our FY23 project, the new fire suppression system for Stillwater Municipal Library. And there are many low-to-moderate-income individuals who use the library and its services and programs on a daily basis. So this is a project that will benefit them as well as the entire city. And the project should be completed within the two-year grant project funding period. And a tentative project estimate has already been requested. In addition, the library is an assembly-type occupancy where groups of people gather, and it's considered a high hazard, fire risk due to all the paper combustibles within it. So it's very important to have a complete and well-functioning fire protection system for a library.
Councillors, any questions?
Is there a fire protection system there now?
There is. It's, it's old and breaks down frequently, requiring a lot of, a lot of funds to replace parts every year.
Anything further, councillors? Is there any recommended action, or is there any action on staff's recommendation?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, I guess, choose the library fire suppression project as our CDBG grant project. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that's approved. Thanks, Shelley. And thanks to everyone who came and provided public input to those hearings and those meetings. Like I said, there are many, many projects in our community that we could use those funds for, and it's nice to find something like the fire suppression project that will benefit so many. Item 7D, receive public comment regarding request for a specific use permit for a medical marijuana dispensary at 911 North Perkins Road. Ms. Porter?
Yes, thank you. My name is Jaclyn Porter, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department. This item tonight is for a medical marijuana dispensary at 911 North Perkins Road. It is located between McElroy and Lakeview Road. It's on the east side of Perkins. It's in front of the American Mini Storage. All these cross the street, and then crossing apartments is to the north. The property is owned commercial shopping, which allows medical marijuana dispensaries with a specific use permit. A little background on this current property is it was an existing marijuana dispensary named Buddy's, and then it was a change in ownership of the license in February of 2021. Current staff noticed during a renewal of the OMMA license, the current owner has not, did not, it should be did not, apply for a SUP. And that is why we are here, to rectify the situation with legal advising to proceed with the owner obtaining the SUP, bringing it into compliance. Are there any questions?
Councillors, any questions? Councillors? So a changed ownership, the new owner didn't come in up and obtain a new SUP, and that was in 2021?
Correct.
Is there any sort of, like, consequence for operating for two years without a, without the city's required SUP? Do we get to, I don't know, seize all their profits? Or, I don't know. I'm just wondering if there's a, I mean, there's no consequence to not getting the stuff you need to get?
No. In fact, I do, if my memory serves me right, Jackie, you can tell me if I'm... Their council did contact the city attorney's office, and it was reviewed at that time. It just, she had an OMMA license, did not know that she needed to come to the city for an SUP. And the change of ownership, just, it wasn't discovered until she was ready for renewal and needed another COC. So at that time, we just asked her to get her application in right away, and now we're here tonight.
Yes.
Okay. Councillors, any further questions? This time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing. Jaclyn, what's the recommendation?
Planning Commission recommended approval with a five to zero.
Councillors?
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the SUP. Please vote. That passes with a vote of four to zero. Thank you. That takes us to item nine on the, no, I'm sorry, item eight, General Orders. 8A is Consider Approval of a Budget Amendment for additional expenditures related to Block 34. And Bill Melis is here to talk to us about that.
Good evening. Here tonight to continue the conversation on the Block 34 project. Here tonight to continue the conversation on the Block 34 project, a project made possible by very generous donors, including Mr. Steve Erby and Simmons Bank. And as you know, but maybe for the audience at home, the city's committed to funding certain improvements related to Block 34. On the interior, that includes demolition, the site utilities, parking and perimeter sidewalks and lighting, which was estimated to cost 1.3 million at the 30% design stage. The city hired Ghost and Associates through action in December to evaluate the options for the area improvements, not on the block itself, but highlighted there in light blue, including the street improvements on Eighth and on Duncan, as well as utilities in those within the shaded areas, and also some other ones directly around the block. Then during the March 20th meeting, there was some hesitancy in approving the recommended alternative because it was, basically went for the lowest budget alternative, and recognizing that it didn't address everything that we would like to do, but based on council's input and reaction, wanted to go back and look at that again. So what we've got now is we're proposing to add the design of stormwater improvements to the project, have an amendment with Ghost and Associates to evaluate the design, design it, and these are some of the design considerations listed there about where it goes. You know, it's not just drainage right there on the block, but to fix that with a long-term solution, we had to go all the way to 12th and over to the drainage channel just south of the library. And anyone who's driven that area knows that, you know, we've got 12 inches or more anytime there's a decent rain in the roadway there. So there's a lot of drainage coming to that one, one location. So addressing the drainage at Block 34, we'll tie into that. We'll look at the number and size of box converts, where we might be able to put, run the drainage underground, because there will be utility conflicts. It's possible that being under the street is the only available place, which will drive the cost up, because then we'd have to replace at least part of the street. We'll look at the design storm, which basically means how much of the stormwater in the 100 year event do we put underground? You'd like it all to be underground, but that's going to be very expensive. We've seen what the alternative is to that, is putting it all on the surface, and that's, has an impact on our roads as well as people who are out and about during those kind of events. But so the plan would be to design these improvements and bid them as what we'd call an additive alternate, which means the base bid would include the other Block 34 improvements. The stormwater, we'd be able to add it or not add it, depending on the price. And so we can take the bids, we come back to this body, and we can make the decision at that time whether to award it or not. It may be that we want to include alternatives there, like someone mentioned at the last meeting, potentially just building the part that's under Block 34, but kind of plugging the ends and not connecting it. That's a possibility. So as we get farther along in the design, we'll think if it's worth having different alternatives like that. We did mention the planning level estimate on March 20th, was it 1.3 million digging for construction, excuse me, digging into it since then, we think it'll cost more than that. Right now, that's the placeholder in the table that I'll show you in a little bit. Oh, here it is now. So the current commitment that we talked about on March 20th totaled 4.8 million. That included 1.3 million on the block itself, or at the perimeter of the block, 2.2 million for the area improvements, streets and utilities, and then at that time, we were looking at another 1.3 for the drainage improvements. We suspect now the drainage improvements might be as close, or might be as high as 2 million, so that'd be pushing us looking at 5.5 million or higher total, total city commitment. Not currently, though. Also, we did talk some about funding options, and part of the reason for staff bringing back that, the more economical option at that time, was that the Transportation Sales Tax Fund didn't seem to have enough to support the option, including the drainage. So in the meantime, we've also looked closer at that. Finance staff has, you know, sharpened their pencil, drilled down into the current available funds, as well as looking at the anticipated revenues for next year from the Transportation Sales Tax Fund, so that we believe that the Transportation Sales Tax Fund would have available funds, partly because the transfer for the bridges will not be as high as expected, partly because, trying to remember the other reason. But one thing, another major thing would be that the anticipated roughly 9 million revenue for next year is available on July 1st. It doesn't have to wait until that revenue comes in. If council chooses, it could be committed anytime after July 1st. So these are projections. This is not the commitment we're asking for tonight. Tonight would just be for the design, be able to make a better decision, have the information to make a better decision at the time of bid.
I think the, not to interrupt, Bill, but the major takeaway for me from that slide, on your last slide, the fact that our stormwater fee does not provide adequate funding for major capital projects, seems like kind of a problem with our stormwater fee. Isn't the point of the stormwater fee to collect the money that we need to be able to construct major capital improvements to our stormwater system, which this would be? I hope we have, I think we have a plan to address that moving forward.
Yes, we do, yeah, good point.
Interjection there.
Yeah, please, thanks for making that good point. And then while we're still back on that slide, another option we are considering is Clean Water State Revolving Fund. That would be through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. They have mostly loan opportunities, but some grant opportunities as well that we'll check out and see if there's anything here that fits. The, addressing here, the strategic priorities, kind of two of them addressed with this project, first being effective services and accountable government through fiscal responsibility, trying to save money, but also trying to look for the best long-term interest of the community. And the second strategic priority is connected spaces, developing a strong sense of place, providing the utilities, or excuse me, the services such as transportation and utilities to meet the needs of the public. As far as budget and funding, currently, this request includes 45,000 in additional authorization, or total authorization of $225,000 for the Block 34 city project, and staff would return later for construction funding options when we, once we've been the project. I know also, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the total authorization versus the task orders, so kind of put this table together, then may clarify it. With the original authorization, we had asked for, you know, normally, you can see the task order there from December was for 60,000, so we normally ask for about 10% contingency. At that time, we asked for additional contingency, knowing that we were going to roll from comparing alternates right into design pretty quickly, so we asked for an extra 35,000 in round rough numbers, to be ready to be able to roll right into that and not hold up the project. So when we came back in March for the final design authorization and the final design task order, part of the authorization had already been covered in the first one, so that's probably why that might have been confusing. But here you can see on each of the steps, and those are cumulative totals, so moving from March to tonight, the red assumes approval this evening, 45,000 additional authorization requested for a 40, roughly 40,000 additional task order. So that leaves us with a total cumulative of 200,000 in task order and a little over 10%, but 25,000 in contingency. Also, a brief reminder that this, the Transportation Sales Tax Fund is a time for Stillwater proposition, so the increased funding there, which is helping pay for this project, was included in that proposition and enabled by a yes vote by the voters. I will stop there and try to answer any questions before moving on to the recommendation.
Counselors, any questions?
Thank you for staff to, for taking the time to go back and kind of reevaluate how we might get this accomplished, or at least give us options to do that.
Oh, glad to, and appreciate the guidance, to help get to what's best for the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to at least have the options out there for us if we can find some funding to pay for it, is another story, but at least we'll know what it's going to cost, right? What's your recommendation for us, Bill?
Staff recommends a motion to approve a budget amendment appropriating additional expenditures of 45,000 for stormwater drainage improvements designed for the Block 34 area, and authorize the general manager to execute a task order amendment with Ghost and Associates for $37,628.55.
Thank you, Bill. Counselors?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. It's approved four to zero, and Bill will talk us through item 8B, which is consider authorizing the general manager to execute a base agreement for civil engineering support.
Thank you. At this time, I'm here to ask you to authorize a master services agreement and task order number one with Poe and Associates for transportation program management services. Generally, this means assisting staff with developing and managing transportation and drainage and related projects. This is support that we simply don't have the staff to accomplish right now. You can see in the bullets on there that we still have the challenges, but this is, it's a national issue. Cities and other government agencies are having this issue, but also a lot of our consultants are having the same thing. When we say we need extra help, come on, hurry up, and they're seeing some of the same problems, not finding staff. But Poe and Associates is able to help us here, and this photo is Park Drive just south of Airport Road. Our, so the, leading up to the selection of Poe and Associates, we solicited proposals from numerous firms, kind of put out a blanket so that we try to capture anybody that's interested and qualified. We shortlisted those three firms based on their proposals and qualifications, and then held interviews. Two of the Transportation Project Advisory Committee members participated, and staff selected Poe and Associates, who is an Oklahoma firm. And task order one, some of the immediate needs will include bidding and construction management services on a couple of projects that have been under design, and honestly have been on high center at about 90% design, so this will help us get them bid and then constructed. This photo is Airport Road, and which is one of the projects. Strategic priority we're addressing here is, again, connected spaces, just like on the last project. And this photo is Monticello, the other, the second of the two very immediate projects. Total budget for the, for the authorization, excuse me, would be 315,000 in expenditures. That would include the base agreement and task order number one. We would come back for future task orders and for any construction authorization. So that, that amount of funds is available in the Transportation Sales Tax Fund, and it does include contingency. This here, the photo is another shot of Monticello, and I meant, we've talked again, this is another project made by the Time Initiative. So again, I'll stop there and try to answer questions.
Thank you, Bill. Counselors?
So if there's an engineering shortage all over, and Poe has capacity for this?
They do, and the contract includes timeframes for delivery of services. And we need them.
That's where it's going. Okay, thank you.
What would it take in terms of our workforce to have the capacity to do this internally? I mean, how many, what positions are we missing in order to be able to do these types of things? I'm not opposed to hiring externally, sometimes that's the best way to do it, but just curious what we would need in-house.
Sure, and that's always, even, you know, prior to COVID, and always a kind of a balance, how much do you do in-house, and how much do you hire out? In this case, and within the engineering department, I don't remember precisely where we are in staffing now, 50 to, at 50 to 70% occupied, or filled, and a good portion of those have a year or less experience with the department. So we've really been, at the worst, we were down to around 30 or 40% of positions filled, but more specifically, project managers. We have, we have six authorized positions in engineering for project managers. Right now, we have one filled. We had an interview today, and hopefully we'll, we'll double that in the near future, but right now, we have one out of six positions filled.
Thank you.
Sure.
Rather than, funny, I mean, I, you know, we have to have these services, so I certainly support that. I wonder, though, if paying for this out of the unused budget on those positions, right? Because we have those positions authorized in the budget, and I mean, should we, or can we take those, you know, assuming those positions don't get filled in the fiscal year, can we transfer some of that money from a budget perspective back over to Transportation Sales Tax Fund, so that we're using as much of that money as possible for actual construction projects? And since we're paying for services here that are technically budgeted for in the budget under personnel items, I would like to see us at least allocate that money to those personnel positions, given that, that we're, that's, you know, that's what we're, that's the service we're paying for here, is to fill those positions. So that's probably an accounting question.
Sure, I, yeah, I know we've talked about that approach before previously. I can't answer it specifically, and if we can talk to the right staff and then get back with it.
It doesn't make a difference for me on this item tonight, but I think just towards staff, to the extent we can talk about that some more in the future to make sure that, you know, I'd like to keep as much of that Transportation Sales Tax money on stuff that we can only spend that money on, whereas this, you know, this money, we, you know, could be allocating to the staff that we don't have, that we're having to pay for.
In general, we could do that. We would have to check with Kristi Kluck to determine whether or not those funds have already been scraped to use in next year's budget, so, because we knew that they were in field, but that's certainly an alternative.
Well, I appreciate you looking into it. Further questions for Bill on this item? What's your recommendation for us, Bill?
Staff recommends a motion to authorize the city manager to execute both the base agreement and task order number one with Poe and Associates for a not-to-exceed amount of $283,943, authorize expenditures not to exceed $315,000, and approve a budget amendment appropriating, excuse me, appropriating expenditures of $315,000 for civil engineering support, project management services, and contingency from the Transportation Sales Tax Fund.
Thank you, Bill. Counselors?
Thank you.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation. Please vote. That item is approved with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to item nine, Resolutions. Item 9A is Resolution Number CC-23-6, a resolution amending Section 5 Electric Service Rules of the City of Stillwater, Terms and Conditions of Service for Municipal Utilities. Mr. Lawrence Smith.
Good evening, counselors. Lawrence Smith, Electric Utility Director. The electric service rules were last updated in 2018. Staff has recently reviewed and updated the rules to better reflect what is evolving in the industry today. Several sections of the rules were modified. Most were minor changes to update information to accurately reflect change in practice or to address situations that may have arisen since 2018. Key changes are the Sections 5.2.3, Enclosures of City Equipment. This has to do with our separation distance requirements for many of our transformers or our. or our switch boxes and things like that. The next thing was, the next item, 5.6.6, Service Lateral Connection Fees. Staff is proposing the removal of all service lateral connection fees for residential development. This is an attempt to incentivize residential development inside our service territory. This will allow the SUA to better compete for residential customers in competitive zones surrounding Stillwater. As the rules read now, the developer is responsible to trench and install the conduit systems and all the underground developments, and all underground developments. The SUA supplies the remaining infrastructure required to provide the service, such as transformers, wire, junction boxes, et cetera. Staff is proposing that the SUA begin providing the trench and conduit systems, as well as the remaining infrastructure, using staff at no cost to the developer. The majority of the remaining changes relate to the removal of language the SUA previously requested of the developer that will no longer be applicable. Staff met with the Builders' Relation Committee to review the proposed change, and no comments were received from the committee. Approval of the proposed amendments to the electric service rules requires the adoption of the resolution that is on the current city council and SUA agenda for consideration. I will pause here and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Lauren. Counselors, what questions do you have?
Did I understand correctly that the city would be doing some of the work that typically now builders are responsible for getting done?
Yes. Yes, we would be doing that in-house now.
Are there any concerns, given some of our hiring issues, that we have enough manpower to do this and not drag, drag out projects for builders?
Very good question. We did check into that. We have a full staff cooperator, and we are slowly building our, our employment numbers up in the Distribution Division. So, yeah, we did look into that, and Clint Oliver, the superintendent, feels comfortable that we can handle that workload now.
Thank you.
Yes.
How many developments do you think this would apply to in any given year?
So, we modeled several developments that came in, and I don't know the exact, how many would come in. I think we're slowly running out of space inside for very large developments. The last development that went in was about 131 homes, which we think that's, that's probably the highest we're going to see with what we got left. So, we felt like, we did some analysis, we have this money funded in our rate stabilization fund. We typically budget $600,000 for system extensions, and we started doing some research and found that we did have some of that left over that we feel that will, that will more than cover this, so.
The idea being that if we are competing for some of these subdivisions, that if we get those meters, that the revenue from getting those meters in our system covers, exceeds the cost that we spend on getting those.
Yeah, absolutely. So we did some modeling on that 131, 131-home community there, and we estimate the rate on return, if we put it in, about 311 days. And so, we would recoup through our revenues what we expended to put in the trench and put in the conduit system in approximately 311 days, so.
On a development that size?
Yeah, on that size, yeah. And not to mention the sales tax revenue from internet sales purchases.
Counselors, any further questions? Lauren, I suppose your recommendation is that we approve the resolution?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Counselors, any action on the item?
Where are we at? CC, yep. Sorry. Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-23-6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. It's adopted with a vote of four to zero. Item 9B is a resolution regarding the dilapidated structures that we tabled from earlier in the meeting, so that will come back at a later meeting after we've had that, that discussion. We don't need a specific motion to table that one, do we?
No.
And then items 9C through G are resolutions that are related to a discussion we'll have in executive session, so we will come back to those later in the meeting. Takes us to item 10, Ordinances. Ordinance on first read is ordinance 3522, an ordinance closing a portion of the 15-foot general access easement in the south half of Section 34 Township 20, north range to east of the Indian Meridian, Paine County, Oklahoma, near property addresses 4099 North Land Run Drive. It's an item from a previous meeting. Is there questions or comment or action on the ordinance?
Motion to advance ordinance 3522 to second read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. Ordinance is advanced to second read with a vote of four to zero. We will jump to appointments now. We have four different boards we need to make some appointments to, and get to the right spot on my agenda. First up, we have an open position on the Airport Advisory Board. We have a couple of different folks who have applied for that role, and I would like to move that we appoint Mindy Murray to a position on the Airport Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that is approved. We appreciate her willingness to serve on the committee and everyone else who has applied. That will take us to the Library Board. We have the expiration of Mike Woods' term. He has indicated a desire to continue serving. We also have one vacancy with a couple of different applicants on file. So I will move that we reappoint Mike Woods to his seat on the Library Board, and then appoint Sharon Edwards to the open seat on the Library Board.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, those appointments are approved. Thank you to both of those folks for their continued service, or their willingness to serve, continued service and willingness to serve on the Library Board, which has new bylaws now, right? We did that last meeting. Excellent. Next up is the Stillwater Reinvestment Plan Downtown Campus Link Project, Stillwater Tax -- it's a lot of words in that title. The Stillwater Investment Plan Downtown Campus Link Project Plan Tax Increment Financing District Number Three. We have one open seat on that board and a couple of different applicants. I would like, I will move that we appoint Devin Wonzier to the seat on the TIF Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That appointment is approved four to zero. Thank you to Devin for his willingness to serve on that board. And then last up, we have the Stillwater Sister Cities Council. We have two vacant seats, one, I think, a term that expires in 2026, and one is an unexpired term that expires in 2024. I'd like to appoint Matthew Payne to the term that expires in 2026, and J.C. Gray to the term that expires in 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on those appointments. Please vote. Those are approved, vote of four to zero. We appreciate, again, everyone's willingness to serve on those committees. I've got a comment for later in the meeting about other open, open seats we have on our volunteer boards here at the City of Stillwater. Those are all very important, and we appreciate our neighbors' willingness to serve in those roles. That does take us to the reports of the officers on the board, and we'll start with Ms. Carley.
A request for an executive session to hold confidential communications between the City Council, the City of Stillwater, and its council concerning the settling of certain claims in pending litigation with opioid manufacturers, distributors, and retailers, styled as City of Stillwater v. Keflon Inc., at all pending in case number 121 OP45045 DAP in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, including potential resolution of certain claims against Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, Teva, Allergan, related to lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs, and taking appropriate action in open session, including possible authorization to settle claims, the disclosure of which may seriously impair the litigation if known by public disclosure, as allowed by 25 OS Section 307 B4. I'd also like to request an executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B2 to discuss labor negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 102. I'd also like to request an executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B2 to discuss labor negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters Local Number 2095.
Thank you so much. Ms. Remnickel.
If you bear with me, Mayor, I have three items. First, we'd like to give a shout out to Kevin Odell. He is running our video board as we speak, and has done that at these meetings and other meetings that we provide live video coverage. He is moving away from Stillwater, and we hate to lose him, but we appreciate his work in the past years, so.
Excellent.
Thank you to him. Stillwater Chamber of Commerce has kicked off their purchase on Perkins Road campaign. Our patrons can potentially win $1,000 in cash prizes while they're shopping local. While Perkins Road US 177 roadway construction project is a necessity, this shop local campaign helps show much-needed support to the businesses located along the roadway. To enter, just visit a store on Perkins Road and make a purchase. Next, scan the QR code on the receipt and fill out a survey to enter the contest. For more information, visit Chamber's Facebook page and their website at stillwaterchamber.org.
That's a really cool program, and I think it's great. It's any business, everybody, not just the Chamber members. I think you get an extra entry if they are a Chamber member, but all of the businesses up there on Perkins Road have certainly seen a reduction in their traffic due to the traffic out in front of their businesses. So I think it's great that the Chamber is making that effort to, to get folks to visit those businesses, so please do so and enter for a chance to win.
And we have some really exciting news from today, and this will be news to some of the council. The Oklahoma Department of Transportation announced that Stillwater would receive $1 million grant funding we applied for in November of 2022 for the Rails to Trails project. These funds are a huge asset to complete a trail system that connects Stillwater from north to south. So eventually, we will finally be at the final mile, final mile. Excuse me.
It's all choked up.
Yeah, on the Cameo, Cameoka Trail. It's a major win for our residents and visitors who enjoy biking, walking, running, and all our multimodal community. Project will extend 1.25 miles from McElroy Road to Boomer Lake. This will be pedestrian and bicycle and ADA accessible, and we believe that this is a great, great thing for the city. And again, we'll connect that trail. Along with that, we know that ODOT has hired an attorney to start the rail abandonment process, so we're looking forward to great things for that trail in the future.
That is very exciting news. Thanks to a lot of folks here at the city who have worked on that project, who are continuing to work on that project, but a million-dollar grant from ODOT and the abandonment of that rail line coming up will create a really, really huge community asset with that trail through, through Stillwater.
And actually, the city will add another $240,000 to that, so. And I know people probably will be thinking, "Well, what happens to that other mile?" We'll still be able to use it, it just won't quite be as pretty, but we'll eventually get there.
We will. We're making progress. Excellent. Thank you, Norman. Vice Mayor.
Yes, there's a reminder, beginning April 3, the City of Stillwater Water Department will temporarily switch to chlorine for water system maintenance. This is a 30-day process, and we want to ensure our customers and bulk water users are aware of this free chlorine treatment. Please know that the drinking water may taste and smell slightly different, but the water remains safe to drink and meets all federal and state regulations. This process will improve the water quality in our distribution system, and staff will continually monitor the drinking water chlorine levels. Frequently asked questions and additional information is available on our website at stillwater.org.
Thank you so much. Counselor Hawkins.
If you are looking for an environmentally friendly way to save money on your water bill, you may want to purchase a rain barrel through the City of Stillwater. These barrels capture water from your roof and store it, and store it for future use. Using rain barrels also helps to reduce stormwater pollution by minimizing the amount of stormwater runoff that leaves the site. Mail-in order forms are due by April 27, and online orders are due by April 30. For more information, visit stillwater.org or email Zach, Z-A-C-K dot Henson, H-E-N-S-O-N, at stillwater.org. You can also call 405-533-8436, if that's easier.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harden.
Save the date for our community center's Daddy Daughter Prom. There are multiple date and time opportunities for, to meet family schedules. Friday, May 5, 7:00-8:30, Saturday, May 6, 5:00-6:30, and also 7:00-8:30. Tickets are available for online purchase beginning April 10 at stillwater.org/dancingwithdaddy. What a great name. Or they can be purchased at the Stillwater Community Center, 315 West 8. Tickets are $25 per couple, add $10 for each additional daughter. Advanced tickets are required. If you have questions or need additional information, call 405-533-8433. This is an annual event that was halted due to health climate, and we are excited to kick it off again.
That is very exciting. That is an event that my daughter and I have enjoyed going to over the years, and I'm glad to see that it's back. Thanks to the folks at the community center for getting that back up and running. I will let you know that the city is accepting applications, as I just mentioned, for citizen representatives to serve on various committees, including the Board of Adjustment and the Board of Drainage Appeals. These committees are essential for increased economic development and infrastructure projects within our community. If you'd like to get involved with your local government and help make Stillwater even greater, please consider serving on one or more of these committees. For more information or to apply, go online at stillwater.org/citizenboards. All right. I don't think we have an agenda item for this, but I will move that we recess the city council meeting at item, before item 14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess city council. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the city council will now be in recess. And at this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for April 3, 2023. Trustees, any action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Under general orders, we have, can, item 5A is consider awarding a substation packager bid to Peak Substation Services. Mr. Smith is back.
Good evening, trustees. On November 16, 2020, the trustees approved the Sixth Avenue Transmission Distribution Relocation Project. Since then, staff has been working with Vern's and McDonald's to procure the long time, long lead time materials and equipment for the project. Specifications and bid documents for the substation packager for Kenzie and Hospital Substations were advertised in accordance with the city's purchasing manual. The substation packager consists of all the above-grade materials and equipments necessary to build out the substation terminals at each substation. Peak Substation Service meant all the bid specifications making, and took no exceptions to the terms and conditions, making them the lowest responsible bidder. I have a motion here, but I'll pause to answer any questions you may have.
Trustees? What's your recommendation, Lauren?
Motion to award the bid for the substation packager to Peak Substation Services, authorize the general manager to execute the contract in the amount of $591,800, and authorize expenditures up to $650,980, which includes a contingency.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that, or, excuse me, four to zero, that item is approved. Item 5B is consider awarding a tree trimming bid to Davy Tree Service, Tree Surgery Company. Mr. Smith?
All right. The SUA contracts for high-voltage line tree trimming around overhead electric lines and is traditionally bid on a three-year cycle with a provision to extend the first-year contract on an annual basis for two additional years. The current contract, which began in 2021, will end on June 30. Bits -- Bid solicitations were prepared and advertised in accordance with the city's purchasing manual. Six bids were received and opened on March 1st, 2023, and are tabulated in the report. Asplin Tree Service Experts LLC was the lowest bidder. However, SUA's experience with Asplin in the past has not been satisfactory as described in the report. Davie's Tree Surgery Company has done an excellent job exceeding expectations since FY '18. Therefore, staff is recommending the bid be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, Davie's Tree Surgery, and they took no exceptions to the bid. I have a motion here, but I will pause to answer any questions you may have.
Trustees? What's your recommendation?
Motion to award the annual tree trimming bid for fiscal year 2024 to Davie's Tree Surgery Company in the amount of $1,695,420 and authorize the general manager to execute the contract.
Thank you, Lauren. Trustees?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Thank you.
Let's approve with a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Lauren. Takes us to Resolutions. Resolution Number SUA 23-2, a resolution amending Section 5 Electric Service Rules of the City of Stillwater, Terms and Conditions of Service for Municipal Utilities. This is the sister resolution of the one we looked at in the City Council meeting. Trustees, any questions or is there action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number SUA 23-2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Resolution SUA 23-2 is approved. Are there any reports from the officers or the board?
Just a quick shout out to SEU. We had a horrible windstorm this weekend.
We did.
And very few outages that were caused by the wind, and part of it is the tree trimming project, the other is the maintenance that's done on the system, so proud of our folks and the reliability of our electric service.
I will say that folks at my office on Friday afternoon were pretty disappointed that the power came back on. Everybody was ready to maybe just call it early day on Friday, and you guys got the power back on very quickly. Appreciate that. Hearing no other reports, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. This time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for April 3rd, 2023. Is there action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. The vote of four to zero, the consent docket's approved. Item 5 is Resolutions. Resolution CETA-2023-1, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement and amended and restated covenant agreement between the Stillwater Economic Development Authority and USA Rare Earth Magnets LLC, USA Rare Earth Real Estate LLC. Do you have an update on this one, Brady?
Just for, yep. So as you recall, with the passage of ordinance 3521, that was on second read, that at our previous meeting, the same changes that were highlighted in those reports are what is being amended and changed in these agreements.
And this relates to the fact that the purchase price of the building is what's going on the books as the increment, the base value, not the actual appraised value of the building, which is lower than what the purchase price was.
Correct. It's going back to what was agreed to in those meetings with the taxing jurisdictions.
Which means our taxing jurisdictions get the benefit of that pretty big bump in that's basis value of that property, and we're excited about that and excited about the work Rare Earth is doing out there.
Absolutely.
Counselors, any, or excuse me, trustees, questions for Brady on the resolution? Is there action?
Motion to adopt Resolution CETA-2023-1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. The vote of four to zero, Resolution CETA-2023-1 is adopted. Any reports from the officers or the board? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn CETA, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting. We are at item 14 on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the reasons requested by the city attorney?
Motion to enter executive session?
Second.
With a motion and a second to enter executive session, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now enter executive session. All right. Welcome back. Do we have a motion to reconvene the Stillwater City Council in regular session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to reconvene council, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now back in regular session. Ms. Carley, do you have recommended action on our executive session?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to move back to Resolutions 9C, D, E, F, and G, and I'll read each of those resolutions by title and then provide a little bit of background so that we can consider taking action from the executive session. Resolution CC 23-8, a resolution to approve participation in Walgreens settlement agreement. Resolution 9D, Resolution, excuse me, item 9D, Resolution CC 23-9, a resolution to approve participation in Walmart settlement agreement. 9E, Resolution CC 23-10, a resolution to approve participation in CVS settlement agreement. 9F, Resolution CC 23-11, a resolution to approve participation in Allergan settlement agreement. And 9G, a resolution CC 23-12, a resolution to approve participation in Teva settlement agreement. These resolutions, for your consideration, are related to the city as a litigating political subdivision in the opioid litigation. We entered into a representation agreement with the McAfee and Taft Law Firm to represent the city in litigation against certain opioid manufacturers, distributors, and other third parties for damages and other relief related to the conduct of those parties in connection to manufacturing, marketing, and distribution of opioids. Last August, we approved settlement agreements with Janssen and a group of distributors that included Cardinal Health, McKesson Corporation, AmerisourceBurger. So now, tonight, we have five additional settlements to consider. The attorneys who represent cities, the City of Stillwater as well as other subdivisions, along with the Attorney General on behalf of the state, have negotiated additional global settlements, and these settlements are with three pharmacy chains, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, and two manufacturers, Allergan and Teva. It's necessary for the City Council to approve participation in those global settlements and authorize the mayor to execute the settlement agreements. There's a settlement participation form, and also with these settlements, the sharing agreement divides the overall allocation to the state at 75%, oh, excuse me, to the state, 25%, and 75% to the litigating political subdivisions. Each of the settlements have base payments with incentive payments. Because the amount of the settlements depends on the number of litigating political subdivisions that opt into these, to participation of these settlements, we can't provide an exact amount that the city would receive, but at this time, our council has provided estimate ranges, and those estimates are as follows. Walgreens, 252,179 base, up to 630,448, including all incentives. Walmart, 130,352 base, to 325,882,000, all incentives. CVS, 230,190 base, to 575,475, all incentives. Allergan, 104,491 base, to 261,228,000, all incentives. Teva, 50,001 base, to 125,003, all incentives. And like the other settlements that are approved, the settlement proceeds would be restricted to being spent on opioid remediation as set forth in detail in the various settlement agreements. In addition, the resolutions tonight seek the approval of state subdivision agreements, and the state subdivision agreements are the sharing agreements that divide the overall allocations to the states and the litigating political subdivisions, including approval of a matrix that sets out allocations between each of the 80 litigating political subdivisions. In addition, there are also state backstop agreements. These agreements address the attorney's fees, where the firm representing the city has waived their right to the contingency fee that's currently in our representation agreement. Instead, they reduce attorney's fees to 15% contingency, and then they agree to apply for fee funds in each of the settlements, where they can be awarded fees to offset fees paid by the city, the state backstops, the firm's collection of 15% in total contingency fees from distributions to subdivisions of the fee funds. So that is a overview of what we are seeking to approve this evening.
Counselors, any questions for the city attorney? Well, in the interest of time, I will make a couple of motions from the chair here on these settlement agreements. First, I will move approval of participation in the Walgreens settlement agreement dated December 9th, 2022, the retailer state subdivision agreement as it pertains to the Walgreens settlement agreement, and the state backstop agreement as applicable to the Walgreens settlement agreement, as recommended by our outside counsel, Todd Court and Tony Peket at McAfee Taft, legal counsel to the City of Stillwater, and the other litigating Oklahoma subdivisions, and including approval of Resolution CC-23-8, and to authorize myself as the mayor to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Stillwater's participation in the Walgreens settlement agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Resolution CC-23-8, along with our participation in the Walgreens settlement agreement, is approved. I will also move approval of participation in the Walmart settlement agreement dated November 22nd, 2022, the retailer state subdivision agreement as it pertains to the Walmart settlement agreement, and the state backstop agreement applicable to the Walmart settlement agreement as recommended by our outside counsel, including resolution, approval of Resolution CC-23-9, and to authorize myself as the mayor to sign the subdivision participation form for the City of Stillwater's participation in the Walmart settlement agreement.
Second.
A motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that's, Resolution CC-23-9 is approved, along with participation in the Walmart settlement agreement. I'll also move approval of participation in the CVS settlement agreement dated December 9th, 2022, the retailer state subdivision agreement as it pertains to the CVS settlement agreement, and the state backstop agreement applicable to the CVS settlement agreement as recommended by our outside counsel, including approval of Resolution CC-23-10, and to authorize the mayor to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Stillwater's participation in the CVS settlement agreement.
Second.
A motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Resolution CC-23-10 and participation in the CVS settlement agreement is approved. I'll also move approval of participation in the Allergan settlement agreement dated November 22nd, 2022, the Allergan state subdivision agreement and the Allergan state backstop agreement as recommended by our outside counsel, including approval of Resolution Number CC-23-11, and to authorize the mayor to execute subdivision participation form for the City of Stillwater's participation in the Allergan settlement agreement.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that resolution and participation in the Allergan settlement agreement is approved. Finally, I'll move that we, excuse me, I'll move approval of our participation in the Teva settlement agreement dated November 22nd, 2022, the Teva state subdivision agreement and the Teva state backstop agreement as recommended by our outside counsel, including approval of Resolution Number CC-23-12 to authorize the mayor to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Stillwater's participation in the Teva settlement agreement.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of... Somebody, is that me? Oh, that's me that has a vote. Nice. With a vote of four to zero, Resolution 23-12 is approved, along with participation in the Teva settlement agreement. I think that covers all of our various settlement agreements for this evening. Just to clarify, from the city attorney, no other action was taken during, on items, needs to be taken on items from executive session?
That's correct. There is no action on the executive sessions related to discussion of labor negotiations with the FOP or the IAF.
All right. With nothing further to be discussed this evening, is there a motion to adjourn the City Council?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn City Council, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.